Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, February 26, 2024. I now call the meeting to order. And I'll ask everyone to stand and we'll all join in the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone. Anna, voice roll call, please.
Chair Erath.
Present.
Vice Chair Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Present.
Commissioner Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Vivar.
Present.
And Commissioner Klepek is absent.
All right, thank you, Anna. This brings us to public comments. If anyone in chambers wishes to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come to either podium. And you'll have three minutes, starting with you, ma'am.
Good evening, planners. My name is Shirley McDaniels and I was here two weeks ago for the same issue of the proposed building of a four-story, six-D unit building on our parking lot of the senior center. One of the reasons why we can't, oh, we can't give up any of our parking lot. And during construction, where would we park? Nineteenth Street from Monrovia to Harbor is always busy. We now have one more signal at Wallace Avenue. So therefore, we have six signals within a quarter of a mile. Placentia Avenue, Wallace Street, Pomona, in front of McDonald's, in front of In-N-Out Burger, and in front of Bank of America. That's the six. So I'm only saying this because navigating traffic on Nineteenth Street is a little tricky. And with a, with a, and with a four-story building on Nineteenth might make you feel a little claustrophobic if you're walking or driving there. And I'm not sure that that area of Nineteenth Street could handle that infrastructure. And again, our solar charging station cannot be moved, dismantled, or abandoned. I did read there's affordable housing units are proposed on Susan Street in Costa Mesa. That was a recent, in the Daily Pilot. And it's a very large complex. That sounds like a really, really good place to put that. And I think that's it. Please consider this project a no. And thank you for listening.
All right, thank you for joining us this evening, ma'am. Anyone in else in chambers wish to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, Anna, if we can go to Zoom. For those on Zoom, you can use the raised hand option.
I have no one on Zoom, however, I have a call-in user.
All right, call-in user, you can press star nine if you'd like to speak.
Call-in user ending in 613, you may provide your public comment.
613, the floor is yours.
They just took their.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'd like to add to the previous comments. It's being floated that this project on West Nineteenth will still maintain 145 parking spots for the senior center. That's not true. There's going to be residents, there's going to be healthcare workers, there's going to be employees parking or taking up some of those 145 parking spots. The project's not going to fail, it's going to be wedged in. I understand the need for affordable housing, but this is not the project, this is not the place. West Side Costa Mesa should not become a high-density buildout. Now, previously at the council meeting, they've heard the first hearing on this to move forward with this. It's insanity. There's, there's a group thing going on. There's no individuals on that council. And I'm worried that we have this on the planning commission because you guys are appointed by them. The city is in big trouble. And I read earlier from someone, one of the planning commissioners commented that there's been great improvements in this city. I would love to read somewhere on Nextdoor where people are thrilled with the direction that this city's going. I do recognize that this planning commission has been pushing back against it. With this fence-free debacle, I appreciate that, thank you. But, you know, what was done to Nineteenth Street down to the single lane is just downright stupid. You've created a thoroughfare and you've created a traffic jam. Now, people are cutting through the neighborhoods to get to where they need to go. That was an unnecessary thing so you guys, or not you guys today, can go get awards and take pictures and whatnot. But they've actually made this neighborhood more dangerous because people are cutting through to get where they need to go. I hope that these, these, these things do not fall in deaf ears because again, like I said, there's a lot of group things going on on this council chamber. And all you have to do is read the comments on Nextdoor about the things that the city has done and you'll see real quick how unpopular this planning commission and city council is with the residents. We dealt with a terrible council before. And now it seems like we're dealing with the worst council. So hopefully, we can find some sanity on the planning commission because we're in trouble. We're in big trouble. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McAvoy. Anyone else on telephone, Anna?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. I saw a couple of people come into chambers during a telephone public comment. If you had anything you'd like to speak to that's not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to have three minutes if you'd like. Otherwise, we'll move on to the items here pretty soon. All right, seeing no one. I will now close public comments and move on to planning commissioner comments and suggestions, starting to my right, Commissioner Rojas.
I have none, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Zick.
Just one comment, feedback to Ms. McDaniel. I think you did speak at our last meeting regarding your concern about parking at the senior center. And I think I mentioned, and you may recall, that the status of that project was going before city council for a screening, which was a very preliminary review that takes place before planning staff even works on it and well before we'd even see it. I'd encourage you to stay engaged, but just know that we're not even close to the planning commission to even considering that project. So just wanted to let you know where we stood with that. That's all I've got, Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Andrade? All right, thank you. Vice Chair? All right, Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir. Thank you to those who are present tonight, those who are joining us online. Thank you for providing your comments. And Commissioner Zick, thank you for providing the member of the public with the update regarding the project that is being inquired about. I want to thank city staff for the installation, the finalization of the the signal, traffic signal at Wallace and Nineteenth Street. I walk to that, through that intersection pretty often with my father on our way to my mother's hair salon on Nineteenth Street. And having grown up in that area and walking that street many times, I know that the stretch of street between the intersections at Nineteenth and Placentia and Nineteenth and Pomona can be a bit long. And I know that historically, I've seen many people crossing the street near Wallace. So I just want to express my gratitude for that traffic signal going in and pedestrians now having a safer way to cross Nineteenth Street. So, yeah, we still have a lot of work to do in our city in making our streets safer for all. As you all might have heard recently, there was another unfortunate traffic fatality near Adams. And that older member of our community happened to actually be the mother of one of my mom's clients at the hair salon. So it hits close to home and we have a lot of work to do in our city. But I know that we're making great strides in improving safety for people in our community. Also, I will be announcing tonight that I will be resigning from the planning commission in the near future and will only be here for several more meetings with you all. So I just wanted to put that out there for, as a public notice. I also want to thank city staff for working with me the past two and a half years that I've been serving on planning commission. You all have been amazing and onboarding me and working with you on the various projects that we've seen up here and various policy discussions. So I just wanted to thank you all, as well as my fellow commissioners. I've learned a lot from each and every one of you and it's been a pleasure serving with each of you. Some of you, from the very beginning that I was appointed to this commission in September of 2021, and others who have been appointed more recently. I've thoroughly enjoyed working with all of you and engaging with you on the various points that we agree and disagree on and working together to make the best decisions possible for the residents in our community. And I also want to thank all the residents out there who have supported me in my tenure on the planning commission, as well as the two council members who have trusted in me and have appointed me to this planning commission, with, starting with council member Manuel Chavez and with council member Arliss Reynolds most recently. So I want to thank them for their trust in me and for allowing me this opportunity to serve in this leadership role. And I've thoroughly enjoyed doing what I do up here for the community, for the city I grew up and have lived my whole life. It's been a real pleasure and honor serving you all and giving back to the community with the, whatever expertise and life experiences I'm able to bring to the dice. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and that's it for me.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Vivar, and thank you for the thoughtful, heartfelt comments. I'll, I'll start by addressing your, your announcement about resigning. And I'll, I'll say, I'm not going to lay it on thick right now because I know we have you for a few more meetings. So I'll let you buckle up between now and then. But in the meantime, I will say on behalf of this commission and particularly for the fact that you and I are friends outside of this commission and I've thoroughly enjoyed our time together and your level of expertise is second to none, Jimmy. So I really appreciate you being here. So at least we got you for at least a couple or a few more meetings. So, so yeah, we'll do something special for you as we near that point, Chair. I'll go ahead and move on because nobody mentioned it. Our own Costa Mesa Estancia grad Jake Knapp just won the Mexico Open yesterday, the PGA Tour at Vedanta Variata course down in Mexico. Took the whole thing, number one. So I'm really hoping city council can do something special for him in the, in the weeks to come if he's back here. But he's a homegrown Mesa Verde resident and just won the PGA championship down there. So if we can, please note that to city council. I'm sure they're already aware. We have a few golfers on the council anyways. But congratulations to Jake Knapp especially. I'd like to move on to, in a similar vein to what Commissioner Vivar mentioned, and, and address something that came up in the last city council meeting in that our council member, Don Harper, just put in his soft resignation as well. And we don't know the exact day that he'll be departing city council, but I did want to take the opportunity to thank him publicly for being of service to this community, particularly to my community in the Mesa Verde area. You know, being, being up here is not always easy. And I think for whatever we do, it's exponentially more difficult to be on city council because there's, there's a lot more and there are different considerations at that scale. So to Don, thank you for being of service to this community. I really appreciate it. I'll also mention that we have a lot of people that are interested in the Fairview Developmental Center meeting since those kicked off recently. And I noticed on social media, on Instagram specifically, on the city's Instagram, that there are a couple of open houses that are coming up, one being February 29th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Costa Mesa Country Club and March 4th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Iglesia Harbor Church at 740 West Wilson Street. So if you're interested in getting to know some more about what's being proposed there and taking part in the decision-making process, I highly encourage you to, to take part. So with that, unless any of my fellow commissioners have any follow-up comments, we'll go ahead and move on. Okay. All right, I see we have no items on our consent calendar, which brings us to our public hearing. We have one this evening, and Anna, if you'd please read the title.
Public hearing item number one, planning application 22-37 to establish an event center with outdoor activities, including a request to offer valet parking and to deviate from the parking requirements at 3150 Bear Street. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Right, thank you, Anna. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, I held a phone call with the applicant's representative this morning and also met with the applicant's representative onsite today in the afternoon for a tour of the proposed areas of these, of the event space. And I also conducted my own search online of publicly available information on the internet regarding this proposed location and the applicant's social media feeds. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Ross?
I did meet with the applicant several months ago and did a tour of his location and showed me the areas of where he wants to hold his event planning and whatnot. And that's essentially it.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Zick? Commissioner Andrade?
None.
Vice Chair?
Nope.
All right, and I held a call, I believe it was, gosh, was it yesterday, with Mr. Koshbin for approximately 10 minutes to discuss the project. And that's about it. So I will now turn it over to Ms. Curly to present the item. Ms. Curly?
Good evening, members of the planning commission. I am Caitlin Curly, Assistant Planner, and this evening I am presenting a project at 3150 Bear Street. This project is an event center that contains several permits. First off, they are applying for a conditional use permit. This is for an event center and also valet parking. The applicant is also applying for a minor conditional use permit for ancillary outdoor activities related to the event center and a parking deviation. This project is located at 31 Bear Street, which is zoned administrative professional. The site is currently used as an office space by the owner of the property, the Koshbin Company. The administrative professional zone is intended to establish areas for public administrative, professional, and similar business office uses. The AP zone limits the intensity of uses within the district to be compatible with the types of activities generally associated with office developments. However, an event center is allowed in this zone with a conditional use permit. In November of last year, the city issued a use determination letter for this property for the temporary operation of an assembly space. This approval was limited to six months and expires on May 31st of this year. As part of this use determination, events were only permitted within the dining room and the approval had a similar attendee limit as the application before you tonight. According to the applicant, no events have taken place to date under this use determination letter. The event center mainly comprises of three interior event spaces, the atrium, the auditorium, and the dining room. There will also be ancillary events in the grand courtyard. However, the grand courtyard will not be operated or rented independently from the interior event spaces. The project will have a maximum of two events per day with no concurrent events. There will be a limit of 225 total people for the event. This includes guests and staff such as caterers, valet parking attendants, musicians, event organizers, and other support staff. Further, there will be no simultaneous use of the office and the event center. This slide provides the interior layout and uses for the building. Suite 100 is a social media studio used only by the Koshbin Company and their employees. Suite 150 is a storage room used mainly to store equipment for the event center. Suite 100B is the atrium, also known as event space number one. Suite 200 is currently used and will continue to be used as professional offices for the Koshbin Company. Suite 200B is an auditorium, also known as event space number two. And Suite 250 is known as the dining room or event space number three. I should mention that there is also a third floor to this building. However, it is currently not occupied and the applicant has no intention of occupying the space anytime soon. This project proposes a parking deviation due to the fact that per code, a significant amount of parking spaces are required in excess of the 241 onsite spaces. However, unique operating characteristics do make this application supportable for a parking deviation. Specifically, the office uses require 20 spaces and the events require 225 parking spaces. These events will not operate concurrently and there are conditions of approval that limit the number of persons onsite. Due to these unique operating characteristics, it can be shown that there is adequate parking available for the proposed uses. There is also a valet parking plan proposed. This valet parking is not required to meet parking demand. The valet podium will be located approximately 300 feet from the adjacent homes to the east and the south of the property. The valet parking plan, when used, will assist in managing queuing and parking locations for attendees. On the image on this slide, you can see the parking spaces in green, which denote the spaces that will be permitted for valet parking. There are some additional parking spaces in orange, which is where attendees will be allowed to self-park. As you can see, there is a small buffer maintained between the valet parking spaces and again, the residential properties to the east and south. This project has been conditioned to provide several mitigation measures for factors such as noise and traffic and circulation. Specifically for the noise impacts, the project has been limited with hours of operation. Indoor events must end before 10:00 p.m. and outdoor events must end before 9:00 p.m. every day of the week. Furthermore, the project has been limited on outdoor events. Specifically, no amplified sound will be permitted. There will only be four musicians permitted, playing only a small selection of acoustic instruments. Furthermore, these outdoor events will occur only in the grand courtyard, which may be as close as 120 feet from the adjacent residential uses, but will often be significantly further away. The valet parking further mitigates noise impacts in that the podium is located far away from the homes and the vehicles, when being parked and sent to be picked up by the guests, will be driven by professional attendants. Several conditions have been imposed on the project to limit traffic and circulation. This includes the fact that events will be limited to 225 total persons. Again, this includes guests and staff. The events will not begin or end during rush hour. No concurrent activities will be permitted, this includes events and offices. And there will be a maximum of two events per day. Furthermore, there is only one access point from this property, that is from Bear Street. There is a fire access gate from Olympic Avenue, but it will not be used. There is also a planter in between the parking area, the paved area onsite, and the actual access gate and Olympic Avenue, further increasing the, further discouraging access to the site from Olympic Avenue. This project is in conformance with the general plan. It specifically is consistent with policy LU-6.10 in that the event center will add to the facilities to meet the needs of Costa Mesa businesses, organizations, and residents, will help to diversify the city's business and economic base, and will also provide opportunities for other businesses to grow and employ more people. The project is also consistent with policy LU-7.6 in that the addition of an event center will add to the range of businesses available to support the local business community. In conclusion, the proposed use, as conditioned, will be compatible with and beneficial to the neighborhood. The site and building layout are suitable for an event center. There is a 225 attendee cap. There are limited hours of operation and outdoor operations are further limited. This project can provide employment not only for Koshbin Company employees, but smaller businesses such as caterers and musicians, and could provide a gathering space for the community and the region. Staff recommends planning commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under existing facilities and approve planning application 22-37 based on the findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Curly. Colleagues, questions, starting with Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Curly, for your thorough presentation. I have a couple of questions. So starting off with parking, I just thought I was a bit curious when I was reading the report that even though the office space and the event venue spaces are not able, are not allowed to operate simultaneously under this CUP, the parking total that would be required of the, of the site was, it was 600 and something, which included the requirements for both event space and office. So was there a particular reason that we're going off of that number rather than the larger of the two in the office or event venue space since they're not able to operate concurrently?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner. This parking table that does point out the 664 spaces is more of a worst-case scenario code-required parking demonstration.
Okay.
Of course, due to the, the conditions of approval that you, you mentioned, the actual parking demand will be significantly less.
Of course, right. And in the applicant's letter, in, I believe it was like page two of it, they mentioned that the valet parking will allow for tandem parking and will be able to accommodate up to 401 vehicle parking spaces. Is that something that staff concurs with, that number, 401?
Thank you for your question. All 401 spaces could be, in theory, accommodated with the applicant's valet parking plan. Staff has limited the actual capacity of the valet parking to a little bit over 225 spaces when you account for the self-park stalls.
Right, so they wouldn't be able to go up to 401 then? They'd be only allotted 225?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. As for instruments, so I understand that only four musicians would be able to perform outdoors? And was that staff's recommendation to limit the instruments only to, say, violin or string-type instrument? was that staff's recommendation to limit the instruments only to, say, viol- uh, violin or string-type instruments and flutes, clarinets, instruments of that sort?
It was a project um, aspect that was determined between the applicant and the city to uh, provide a quiet atmosphere um, for, of course, the, the patrons and guests of the site and adjacent residential properties.
So, since uh, brass instruments are oftentimes much louder, brass instruments, for example, would not be allowed?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so as for the third floor of the property, under the C U P then, is the applicant not able to use this uh, area at all? Because I, from what I take it, the third floor is more or less a shell?
That is correct. The third floor is not um, inhabitable condition at the moment. Um, it is accounted for in the parking table and as an office use, um, there is um, adequate parking for that third floor should it be occupied. Um, however, there is a condition of approval and some other statements that state that um, to use the space uh, for any reason, uh, it would require Planning Division approval to ensure compatibility with the event center and um, whatever they put on the third floor.
So, any reason, for example, if, even if they wanted to do, say, storage up there, they would have to let you guys know?
That's correct.
Okay. So, in my site visit today, I noticed that the auditorium had a sign posted that said a hundred and ninety-two maximum capacity. So, would auditorium still follow that maximum capacity or would they be able to put up to two hundred and twenty-five guests in there?
The maximum capacity you mentioned is um, more of a, a building code occupancy requirement would have, which of course, um, trumps uh, any entitlement.
Okay.
So, should the auditorium be used, um, they would have to go with the lesser of the two numbers, which is the the number that you mentioned, the hundred.
One ninety-two, one ninety-three, whatever it was, yeah. I'm sure you saw it in your site visit.
Yes.
Uh, and my last question, so in the um, in some information I found online, the applicant expressed uh, uh, a desire to hold a, an open house type event at their property. For, I, I guess, followers of their social media channels or, or whatnot and something about displaying their vehicles as well. So, would that be something that they would be able to do under a, a special other event permit since the C U P wouldn't cover that since the, uh, only the um, areas that we're looking at today, including the courtyard and those three indoor areas would be able to be used?
That is correct. Um, the C U P would not be able to accommodate um, a vehicle showing um, as described. That, but you're also correct that um, a special events permit um, could be possible. Um, however, it's limited to only four times a year. Uh, so it would not be a, be able to be an option for a, a recurring type of event.
So, the applicant would be able to, I guess, hold that type of event four times a year maximum?
Yes.
In theory, okay.
In theory.
In theory. All right. Uh, I think that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bavard. Uh, moving along. Commissioner Zick.
I was hoping to uh, hear other people ask questions and uh, mine might be covered. Ms. Curly, thank you for your report. Uh, let me start with the questions I've got about the third floor. Uh, your staff report indicates that the third floor is unfinished construction. My first question about that is when was construction started on that third floor and why did it stop?
So, construction has not taken place on that third floor.
So, it's not unfinished construction. It's not started construction?
It is uh, yes, yes, it's, it needs some work.
Uh, Commissioner Zick, just to put a, maybe a little finer point on it.
Thank you.
I think that language was um, maybe terminology that I had added to the staff report. The idea being that there are some circumstances on the third floor, as I understand it, that where there may be some exposed wiring and other aspects of the building that aren't completely finished, uh, which leads it to being more of a safety concern from the city's standpoint, which is why we simply wanted to document it in the report so that it was made aware to the applicant and any future users of that property that that area should not be occupied uh, by the general public.
Okay. And then there's an implication that the use of this facility is going to be such that this third floor is not going to be used. Yet it's somewhat inferred in a couple of places in the report that the third floor may very well become used at some point and that use would not be subject to our review or the condition of approval. And uh, is, that's your intent? That uh, if a C U P is granted, an applicant can come back later and add that third floor in?
The third floor would require a Planning Division, at least preliminary review, to determine that the use would be permitted. So, for example, if it was an office that was being occupied with the site uh, with the third floor, um, that's permitted by rights. Um, however, if, say, the applicant decided to expand the event center to the third floor, um, that would likely require an amendment of this entitlement and would therefore be brought before Planning Commission in all, in all reality.
Would you, when you have in this application a statement that says that the occupancy for this site is limited at two twenty-five, if the third floor is developed at some future point, does that twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five person occupancy limit for the entire site still hold?
It would, yes, for the event center.
For the entire site?
Yes.
It's not the event center, it's the entire site?
That, that's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. Because the headquarter operations would not be concurrent with any events.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Let me move on to uh, the subject of uh, sound. In, in your staff report, you indicate there's no amplified sound on the exterior. Uh, condition of approval number fifteen isn't worded quite as precisely and I wonder if that was an oversight? And that's on page seven of the uh, conditions of approval. It states that no amplified music or music speakers would be permitted outside. So, it, would it be correct to change the wording on that to say no amplified sound or sound speakers shall be permitted?
That is the, the intent of the condition and we can absolutely change it to be more precise if you'd like, Commissioner.
I would like it to be more precise.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. I'm curious about this idea that multiple events will not occur concurrently. Yet, you could have a single event that would utilize all of the event spaces at the same time. So, why would we care? What is the interest in saying that multiple events will not happen concurrently? Why, why, why would we say that when a single event could use up all the event spaces at the same time?
I think our intent there was, in part, if I understand it correctly, conversing with the applicant on what their proposed operations are. But also, if you had multiple event center events occurring at the same time, then each of those events is potentially smaller um, and going on and, and you would sort of double up, if you will, on, in terms of the staff because the idea is that each event host would bring their own caterers and other support staff. And it probably made more sense from our standpoint that there was just a single event happening at one time. So, there wasn't a duplication of the work, of the efforts, if you will. That parking could be managed better on the site if it was just one event happening at a time. Um, and just some of those other operational types of considerations. Um, from a business standpoint, obviously, we don't know what the applicant would be renting the facility for. And so, as you start dividing events, if it was, you know, if you had one event, maybe you could possibly charge a, a, a higher rate for the use of that facility. But if you begin to divide that into two or three simultaneous events because of the ultimate cap of two hundred and twenty-five people on that site at one time and inclusive in that two hundred and twenty-five total population are the support staff for the facility, the number of actual attendees starts to drop more significantly as you multiply the number of events, possibly getting to a point where maybe it doesn't quite make as much sense for the, uh, for the host to lease that space out. So, I think it was a little bit more of an operations standpoint with some business considerations. Um, but maybe the applicant could also supplement that answer if they have any thoughts.
Okay. So, let me take a run at the questions slightly differently. From the city's perspective, we would care, is a question, but in the form of a statement. We would care that the max- maximum occupancy at the site does not exceed two twenty-five. That would be an interest of the city, correct?
A- absolutely.
Okay.
Correct. The impacts that the city would be concerned with in trying to mitigate are generated by the total number of people who are on the site.
So, let me ask it then again. What interest would it be of the city whether there's one event occurring, two events, or three events occurring? Provided that it's within the envelope that we care about, which is two twenty-five?
That's a great question. So, I think, I think we have a very sort of narrow interest in that, but it, it would be more connected to operations, um, maybe traffic and circulation and potential impacts for, you know, the adjacent residential uses. So, by having one land you, or one event on that site at a time, because of the nature of the way event centers generally happen, everybody's going to show up at sort of one time, right? There's a narrow window for sort of arriving to the site and then departing from that site. And we think we can control the impacts a little bit more, if there were, or a little bit better that way. If there were multiple events occurring at the same time, that doesn't necessarily imply that they're all starting at the exact same time, but there could be some overlap um, and multi- and use of multiple spaces within there. And so, if somebody was to arrive at, let's say, two o'clock in the afternoon, another event could begin at two thirty, another event could occur at three o'clock. Um, that seems to stretch out the potential for additional traffic on Bear Street at that intersection and possibly um, disturbances to residents who are adjacent to the property. Even though we've done our best, we believe, to try and mitigate for some of that noise and circulation uh, impacts through the conditions that we're recommending.
Okay, okay. Thank you for fielding that question. So, related to the start time and, and the interferences that you're referring to, uh, Fair Peers did this analysis um, that centered on trying to avoid rush hour. And I guess the advantage to the applicant of avoiding rush hour was that we would not exceed the hundred peak hour trip count. Correct? Okay. And in the Fair Peers report, they indicate that rush hours, I, I'm speaking only to the morning rush hour to simplify my questioning. They identify the morning rush hour as being between seven and nine A M. And so, we have a condition of approval that says events cannot start between seven and nine A M. So, if an event starts at nine A M, wouldn't it be reasonable to expect that people would be showing up between eight and nine? Eight thirty and nine? And isn't that in that rush hour window?
It's, it's possible. Uh, I did have a conversation this afternoon with our transportation manager, Jennifer Rosales, kind of about that. One of the things that she had pointed out was in the Fair and Peers trip generation memo, there was an accounting for a certain percentage of, in, in this particular case, the support staff arriving to the facility a little bit earlier than the actual start time of the event. But to your point, there, there are always going to be a certain percentage of the population who would like to arrive to, to a location fifteen or twenty minutes early. But, you know, I don't know that we can necessarily control for that in a hundred percent, a hundred percent of the cases, but we want to make sure that the event isn't starting during the timeframe where there is significantly more traffic on the roads during that morning peak hour. Um, keeping in mind that if an event did start at nine A M, that is kind of at the end of the peak hour. So, it's at that point in time where it's starting to taper off. And so, even if the people do show up a little bit earlier, I think we're kind of willing to accept that trade-off.
So, if we were a little bit more conservative and said uh, we're not going to bother with that logistic strategy of trying to avoid uh, this uh, rush hour. According to the staff report, it would lead to the requirement for a traffic study. Any reason why we wouldn't, out of an abundance of caution, require a traffic study? What's the downside to doing a traffic study as opposed to playing with these start times to get around that requirement?
Thank you, thank you for your question, Commissioner. The code uh, requires a traffic study for any trip amount uh, over uh, one hundred trips uh, per peak hour. A traffic study uh, was not necessary at this, in this project um, because the peak trips were below that limit?
So, I understand that. My question was different.
Commissioner Zick, if I, if I may, let me give, give that a try. So, uh, as Ms. Curly mentioned, the code requires a traffic study in certain situations. Um, and it basically centers in the peak period, peak hour traffic periods. So, when an applicant proposes a submittal outside of that or a develop, or traffic outside of that, that's not included in our traffic study requirements. Uh, your question was, um, would it, would it be applicable to require a traffic study during that time? It would not be applicable. The, the, the traffic study requirements are very specific. It's during the peak hour and it's over a hundred peak hour trips.
Yeah. So, I, I wasn't asking if it was applicable. I was asking if it would be appropriate or conservative for us to do a traffic study rather than jiffling around with start time of these, of events to avoid doing a traffic study. What's the downside to doing the traffic study?
Oh, I see. So, you, so you're suggesting that if the applicant would prefer to do a traffic study to have events during these times, that might be something that would be beneficial for the project?
Why wouldn't we do a traffic study?
It, we were not doing a traffic study because the proposed trips are not generated during the peak hour trip period and not excessive of a hundred trips.
Okay, I'll move on.
Is that all, Commissioner?
No, I'm collecting myself for my next question. The parking analysis concludes, if I understood it correct, that uh, we do not need to have valet parking in order to accommodate the full occupancy at the site for the various events. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. If that's the case, why would we be sitting here looking at approving a valet plan if it isn't needed?
So, while the valet plan is not necessary to meet the parking demand, the code still requires a conditional use permit for valet parking. Um, so it has been um, included in this application. While the valet, while the valet parking plan, um, it may not be necessary, as I said, um, it does provide a bit of a upscale feel to this sort of event that the applicant is looking to host at these locations. So, that is um, the main uh, reason we believe that they are applying for this.
Okay. If, Commissioner Zick, if I also could, uh, pay that, that comment. The, the other aspect I think is beneficial to the commission and the city to have you review and potentially approve a valet parking plan is that you are able to um, ensure that the location of, you know, sort of the, the pathway as the cars enter the site, how they meander on the site, where they then drop off at the valet podium, uh, where that's located. Not having that would then, not having a plan that designates where that drop off and pickup location is would then mean there's no regulation of that. So, there could be potentially somebody who places that, that valet podium closer maybe to Bear Street and the, the project driveway such that maybe queuing, you know, extends out onto the street, which is something that the city certainly want, wouldn't want. So, even though we're not doing the valet plan to meet required parking, we do want to make sure that the operation of the valet plan is appropriate for the site. Uh, so that doesn't cause any uh, uh, other impacts to the road. doesn't cause any other impacts to the roadway.
Thank you. No more questions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Moving on, Commissioner Andrade, anything?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Vice Chair.
I just have one question. The fire exit off Olympic. We didn't have any conditions to ensure that that stays shut during these big events. Is there, I would have imagined that to be a condition, but I'm sure there's a reason why. You understand my question? I'm trying to ask why we don't have a condition.
A condition?
I don't know if I'm missing something. I don't know if it...
A condition was not included because we felt that by default, based on, you know, the operations of the site and the layout of the site, that it would be infeasible for that fire lane to be used for any other purpose than a fire lane. There is an overgrown planter between Olympic Avenue, the gate that leads to the entrance of Bear Street, and then the actual driving surface on the property, which makes access to that, through that entrance to the site, very infeasible except for, of course, emergency vehicles.
So they'd have to get a permit, at which point we would catch it and figure it out from there. Okay.
We could also add it as a condition without any problem.
Okay. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll start by saying, Ms. Curly, thank you for a great presentation. Really enjoy when you're up here. Maybe I just want to clarify a few things that were said earlier for the record. If at some point in the future, the third floor is proposed as a use of this event center, is it more likely than not, or likely entirely, that it will be coming back to PC for approval, Or alternatively, could we could we condition this to come back to us if we insist?
We can absolutely add a condition if you would like, Chair.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Also, for amplification of sound or music, everything that's amplified is inside, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I'll probably revisit this at some point later on about amplification, so I'll kind of hold off on the rest of that. In staff's opinion, why end only at 10:00 p.m.? Why not later?
10:00 p.m. was chosen in part to align with the city's noise ordinance and also taking into account past entitlements that have had success before the commission, and also, of course, accommodating for potential noise impacts at the end of the events to the neighboring properties.
So would those potentially be just people leaving the indoor area where amplified music is being played to potentially getting in their cars and hearing doors shut and lights turning on? Or what's staff's logic with the 10:00 p.m. ending?
That would likely be the noise impacts after 10:00 p.m. when the event is closed. It would be people heading to their car to leave the event.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Also, to clarify, Olympic is not being used for ingress or egress?
No.
Okay. All right. Only Bear Street, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And I think those are all my questions, my questions, my questions for staff at this point, but I may come back. Thank you, Ms. Curly. Colleagues, any follow up questions for staff? All right. Seeing none. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward to either podium. And if you would, please state your name for the record, number one. Number two, let us know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval. And number three, do you agree to them? Floor's yours.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well, first of all, thank you to everybody, commissioners, chairman, as well as Scott, Assistant Director and Assistant Attorney and all the CDS staff. I apologize, I came down with a very bad cold this morning. So if I cough, I apologize. I'm Manny Koschman with Koschman Company, the ownership of 3150 Bear. We're here for the CUP of the event center. Thank you again for considering it. And I have read most of the report, not all of it, but my associate, Ali, who's been involved and working with Caitlin closely and Jennifer Lee prior to that, has a lot more detail, so I may refer to him if I don't know some of the answers.
Sure. And I guess to the best of your knowledge, with what you've read and the conditions of approval, do you agree to those conditions as written?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, the floor is yours, Mr. Koschman, if you'd like to present at all.
Thank you. Well, the property, as you guys know, was sort of abandoned for multiple years. We spent, you know, over a million dollars improving the site, beautifying it, and I think the neighborhood really enjoys seeing some life into the property. Since we occupied it as a headquarters, we've been getting a lot of requests for events, weddings, birthdays, because it's such a beautiful landscape and gorgeous grounds. And, you know, I don't have a big staff in my company. We have about, give or take, 20 employees at any given time, so it's really an overkill for a headquarters. But I wanted to do this event center to also add amenities to the neighborhood and generate some revenue as well as create some jobs. So that was the plan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Koschman. Colleagues, do you have any questions for the applicant, starting with Commissioner Vivar?
Hi. Thank you for being here, Mr. Koschman, and we hope you feel better soon. Is Ali here?
Yes.
I'd like to follow up with him some questions. I have one question for you at the end, Mr. Koschman, but I'll go with him first. Two questions that I have.
How's it going, Commissioner?
Hey, good to see you again.
Likewise.
So you might remember in my site visit today, I asked you about the length and feet of the queuing space between the valet podium and the driveway, or at least your property line. So do you happen to know what that length is?
Correct. After reviewing, it's 521 feet of queue line.
521 feet. And this is from the podium to the property line, right?
From the, correct, from the driveway entrance to the podium.
Sorry. Does the driveway entrance include the city right of way, or is that the, like, ones in your site, in your property?
From the property line, from...
Okay. Okay. And you, so you're confirming then that the third floor is not going to be used for anything?
Not at this moment.
Not at this moment? I believe that might be it for you. Ali, would Mr. Koschman come back up?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Koschman. So I was going through your social media and you posted a video six days ago in which you said, hey, guys, I got my permit from the city for an event center if you want to get, you know, have your wedding or birthday party at my at my site. Come on down. So what did you mean by, hey, guys, I have my permit?
Well, we have a conditional use permit. It's a temporary permit, so, you know, we are allowed to use a ballroom.
Oh, but you mentioned the 250, a number of 250 guests in your video. Were you referring to this permit tonight?
No, the previous permit. And I may have misspoke and it's 225. Yeah.
Okay. But you were not referring to this permit today, then?
No.
Because you mentioned the Palazzo in that video?
Yes. Yeah, I have a temporary permit currently.
So is the Palazzo the three areas that we're looking at tonight with the ancillary courtyard area, or is the Palazzo the unit you already have for events, or what is it?
I'm not sure I understand.
What is the Palazzo? I guess I'm asking you.
Yeah, Ali may.
Hey, Jimmy, the temporary use is for the ballroom space that we saw, and it's 225 people. And I believe Caitlin also referred to it in the PowerPoint presentation as well.
And so is that space called the Palazzo, or what are you guys calling the Palazzo?
The Palazzo is the name of the building. The whole facility is called Palazzo by Koschman, and under the Palazzo is going to operate an event center, which, you know, the temporary only is for the ballroom, and today's CUP hearing is for the three spaces that we walked.
And you're saying that, how long has your current, I guess, ballroom event space have? How long has that been operational? And how many events have you had since?
We haven't had any events, but Caitlin referred me from, we got it in November, and I believe it expires in May. So we have some runway still, is currently active, and in order to be proactive, we're trying to get the CUP application before it expires, so there's no overlap.
And Mr. Koschman, so you might remember earlier that I asked staff about the events. That same video I was referring to posted six days ago, you mentioned, you expressed interest in having an open house type event with, I'm guessing, your social media followers. Do you plan to have that open house event or other similar ones in these event spaces that you'll be leasing out?
Not planning on it, but if I were to do one a year or so, I would definitely apply for a special permit through the city.
And you would foresee doing one with vehicles, then, I'm guessing?
Oh, if it would be an open house for, like, you know, cars and coffee type, I think, I would apply for a permit.
And I guess you would use, so by open house, you mean people kind of milling around your side and looking at everything and including the Palazzo event spaces that are under review tonight? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Koschman, thank you, and Mr. Chair, I think that's it for me.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Zick.
Thank you. I've got four questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Pretty simple ones. You indicate that you have, you will voluntarily restrict your office operations when there is an event going on.
Correct.
And I'm kind of not understanding that. People won't come in to work that day?
Well...
What does that mean?
Well, typically, the events are usually 5:00 to 9:00 or 5:00 to 10:00. These are birthdays, weddings, they wouldn't be, you know, at noon. If there is the type of wedding that there would be a reception, it's usually on the weekends, and we're not open on weekends.
Got it. Curious about this valet parking thing. The explanation I got when I asked about it was that the reason why you're having, and I'll give you the question at the end, the reason why you're having this valet parking is so that you have more of an upscale appearance, you know, fancy events have fancy valet parking. Yet everything I read in the staff report and your letter in particular says that having a valet parking plan will allow the venue to accommodate parking capacity up to 401. Now, if you're limited to 225 people, why would I care that you could park 401 or 1401 or 4001? Why would that be relevant?
I'll refer that to Ali since he was working on this.
Correct. So from my understanding, we needed a valet plan in order to kind of have a full study and scope of work. And correct, since we have 225 people, logically speaking, we would never need 470 parking spaces by any means. We will never have that amount of, you know, valet plan needed. The main reason we're going to have valet on events is in order to mitigate any overflow to the Bear Street site, by having the gates open and having cars queued instead of having them park and having some confusion on that side. So David, by having a valet plan, we can ensure there's no overflow on Bear Street and everything's, you know, smoothly parked.
Why would there be an overflow on Bear if you can't have more than 225 people and you have 240 parking spaces? Why would there ever be a backup on Bear?
This was just a general comment to kind of mitigate, you know, from our early discussion when Jennifer was on board and we were talking with her. She was just more so wanting to ensure that in no circumstances, in case there is a delay of arrival or any, you know, unforeseen circumstances, that wouldn't happen. And having a valet plan, which is their sole duty to park the cars, would kind of mitigate that.
The thing that's identified as event space number four, which has also been referred to as the grand courtyard, it indicates in the staff report that that is not a separately rentable area, but would be ancillary to one of the other three event spaces. What if you were contacted by somebody that says, I'm not really interested in any of those three indoor spaces, I just want the grand courtyard, could I rent that? What's your answer?
It's not something that we have so far had any inquiries about. A lot of, you know, people are looking at it for, again, weddings and, you know, corporate events, and that would just be a reception for that use.
Okay. And then my last question. On page seven of your letter, you're discussing community outreach. And it indicates that you had an open house on September 10th of 2022?
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Over a year and a half, almost a year and a half ago.
That is correct.
I just want to make sure I read that correct. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Anyone else? Commissioner Andrade?
So, I mean, the question's for either of you. As you mentioned, this is a huge investment in our community in bringing it up to date and up to par to begin receiving and setting events. So with that big picture thinking as an investor, I know you have it here as tentative, but any future, big picture thinking ideas for what would take place on the third, on the third floor?
Yeah, so the third floor is, one area is gutted out, so like Caitlin said, it would have to be constructed. There is nothing to be used. And one side of it is the old, very old outdated office, but it's basically like a maze. It would have to, again, be gutted out and rebuilt as office. Again, with 20-plus employees, I'm never going to need extra office unless, you know, I started another company. So foreseeable future, I don't see me using the third floor. And that's why we're going to, you know, close access to the third floor. It's part of the CUP. We would not have power to the third floor, and also elevator will be programmed, or it wouldn't take you to the third floor.
Okay. So as of now, no big picture thinking for the vision for that?
No.
Because it seems like such an underuse of space, but...
Yes.
Okay. And then, you know, again, sounds like, at first pass, sounds like a great opportunity for events and great business bringing into the community and to Costa Mesa. Do you have any plans on engaging with the community? As you know, we're a city that is quite diverse. There is a huge presence of community-based organizations. Do you have, do you foresee any engagement in that aspect in our community?
Oh, absolutely. Well, I, you know, I went to Costa Mesa High School, and my first job was at Kmart on Harbor Boulevard, 1986. So my first apartment was on Adams Avenue, Adam's apartment, way back when. So I've been in Costa Mesa most of my life. We're absolutely open, you know, we haven't really come up with any program for neighborhood, but I'm open if city has anything that you guys want to do, where, you know, our doors are open, so.
Okay. Sounds great to hear.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Vice Chair? Anything? Anyone else? Commissioner Rojas?
I do. I just wanted to, it's not really a question, just more of, help me clarify something in my mind here, because I'm seeing one of the letters here, and I've heard it a couple of times, of the, I don't know, what do you want to call it, car events, car shows, car something, where we're going to put, I'm just trying to figure it out, because I remember the lay of the land when you showed me the property, and it looks like there's quite a bit of space, but then I'm hearing, you know, Commissioner Zick's discussion and also conversation regarding like the valet and the space and all that kind of thing. So help me understand if you do do that on that once a year or twice a year with a permit kind of thing, what that would look like? How that envisions in your mind so that those watching and those that have written their concerns, we can address that instead of just glancing over it? Like, what would that look like? How do you see that playing out and how would we occupy that space, assuming that we're still going to limit ourselves to 225 people on the site at any time? Assuming that we're still going to limit ourselves to 100, to 225 people on, on site at, at any time.
Yeah. Well, I would definitely, you know, have like VIP tickets. So it would be limited. It wouldn't be open, gates open and everybody coming because that would just be unmanageable. So that's, you know, how would I foresee doing it? But I've been on the property for two and a half years. I haven't done it because of that. It's, could be a nightmare. So.
Okay, that, that's the answer I was looking for. That's how you would control that?
Yeah.
Because it's not something like, when I think car show, it's like packed.
Yes.
And it's a lot more than 225 people there if you open it to the public. But controlling it that way, then I think that gives us a fair assessment of what the vision is. And that was it. That's the only question I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Mr. Koshbin, Mr. Ali. It's a good sign when my colleagues up here ask all my questions and I can just keep crossing them out. I actually don't have any questions for you at this point, but I may a little bit later. So.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being up here. Last round, any last questions? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. You're welcome to take a seat. I will now open the hearing for public comments. If there's anybody here in chambers who wishes to speak to this item, you're welcome to come to either podium. And you'll have three minutes. At the one minute mark, you'll hear a little ding. And at three minutes, it'll, it'll shut off automatically. All right. And we'll start with you, sir.
I am Melvin Lucas and I see no need of having another eating place at this location, seeing that we have eating places all over this area. South Coast Plaza on Bristol, on Baker. I see no need at all for more eating places. Yes, I live close to this area and I don't believe that we need the additional traffic. Now, if you'll come down on Bear Street, most evenings you'll find that it's very congested. And 225 cars trying to get into Bear Street address at, in the evening would congest more than what it is already. And so I don't think we need that additional traffic on that little street. I really don't. And I don't believe we need an additional eating place either.
Now, can I go sit here? We don't need a traffic study. We know Bear, Pollerino, Bristol is a mess. Morning, afternoon, nighttime. That will only cheapens Costa Mesa with that kind of businesses. Yeah, you want money. Yeah. But we pay taxes too. Okay? Better than 20 years, two trips. Yeah, we pay taxes. If they're going to serve alcohol, it will make it even worse. Traffic, noise and alcohol. We live in the Olympic Avenue area. There were some people doing some painting, maintenance and everything. We hear the voices. We hear everything. This three minutes, three minutes. Okay, please, but no. We're Costa Mesa residents and that will cheapen Costa Mesa. We already have Sarkos Plaza and I know it's weddings, whatever, whatever. Alcohol will be served. So we've got more drunk drivers, more traffic, more noise. We don't need that. I hope you guys say no to this.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak to this item? Yes, ma'am. Welcome back.
I'm just so curious. So I have to ask, is this the old Trinity Ministries complex that was? Oh, okay. Sat vacant for a long time. Somebody bought it, refurbished it and wants to have this event center. That's the deal. Okay, got it. Thought that's what, what that was.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir? Almost thought you had a golf scorecard in your hand for a second.
It's just my invitation.
Okay. Yes, sir. Flors are.
My name is Gary Marshall. I live in a neighborhood for about 45 years. So I know when that building was constructed, when it was Trinity Broadcasting, I used to walk my dog through there at 10 o'clock at night, watching him paint the 16 chapel on the ceiling. So I know about the property. I think the location as far as what they're trying to do is pretty good. I guess my concern was having to do with the, since I'm also a car person too, which I'm looking forward to the events, but Bear Street does get a little busy. My concern about the valet parking, the cars lining up along Paul, or up Bear Street, or even trying to entrance, because I think there's only one entrance in and out of that property. I don't know if I heard anything, if anything was going to be added to that. But I know how wide the gates are. I know how the location is. And that's what my concern was. Plus, you know, we have the community park where I take the grandkids to, which is Schiffer Park. So since you have valet parking there, there's going to be a fee charge. And for some people that don't feel like paying a fee or they're going to be using Schiffer Park to park. So again, I'm not sure how big these events will be. I heard about the limitation as far as numbers and parking. I think those are some of the things that I was more or less looking at. And I kind of assumed that most of this stuff's going to go on, on the weekend, which is, makes traffic on Bear Street a little easier. But holidays gets a little crazy on that street and I think everybody knows that. So something to consider. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? Seeing none, Anna, if we go to telephone or Zoom, whichever.
Yes. Cynthia McDonald, you may provide your public comment.
All right. Welcome, Cynthia. Is she on Zoom? So raise hand option.
Cynthia McDonald, you may provide your public comment.
Do we have anyone else on Zoom or telephone that we can go to?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Let's give it another five seconds. Cynthia, if you can hear us, we're teeing you up for public comment. Yeah.
So Chair Erath, Bill Rodriguez, just as a matter of complete disclosure for the commission, I did have a phone conversation with a lady this afternoon. She wanted to express her opposition to the project. We encouraged her to submit something in writing or attend the meeting or call in. She was not interested in any of those options. She indicated that she lived within, adjacent to the project within about 50 feet. And she was concerned about noise and traffic as well. So just wanted to put that out there for your consideration. I know we, we like to have people sort of back up their comments with something in writing or, or in person. But just wanted to make sure that that was on the record for your consideration.
I appreciate that. I know that occasionally does happen. Not, not very often, but I appreciate that. Cynthia? Nothing? All right. We'll move on. Go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing and ask my colleagues if you have any further questions for the applicant at this point? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Koshbin, if you have any closing comments, you're welcome to come up and mention anything if you'd like, or Ali, if you'd like to come up as well. All right. Thank you. Colleagues, do you have any further questions for staff at this point? Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah. So when I visited the site and in the light of some of the public comments here tonight as well, I, I did wonder for event space three, the, the ballroom, which is on the second floor, is there any particular reason that staff possibly didn't think it was necessary to do a, some sort of a sound study? Because I don't know that, like, event space two, which is the auditorium, that event space three has very much insulation. If somebody were to have a DJ with music going full blast, I know that a lot of those kind of bass notes can travel pretty far, more than the rest of the music. So sometimes in the distance, you might not hear all what's going on, but you might hear a, you know, a boom, boom, boom kind of thing. So is there a particular reason that staff maybe didn't find it necessary to have a sound study done of that space or to require further insulation of event space three?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner. We did not require a sound study because there are no doors. And I believe the windows are inoperable, cannot be opened. There are no doors that lead directly from the dining room, event space number three, to outdoors. Therefore, there's no, less chance of sound, you know, getting out of the room and disturbing the occupants and the neighbors. Additionally, that room is at least at its worst case, 60 feet away from the nearest property line. So we were fairly confident that there would be no too minimal noise impacts to the neighbors. Additionally, we have a condition of approval that requires the applicant to of course comply with our noise ordinance. So if it should become a problem, that condition could go into effect under the noise ordinance and action could be taken.
And so I guess that would be triggered if we were to receive complaints from members of the community, residents that live in the neighborhood that call up the city and let us know that they are in fact hearing, you know, I don't know, loud bass notes at say 9:00 PM when they're trying to sleep?
That is the most likely way we would find out. Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, um, yeah, because the reason I say this is I grew up in the part of Costa Mesa where there was a kind of nightclub bar type thing. I don't know how far away it was, but separated by two apartment complexes and I still heard their music at night. So I don't know if either it was very loud and those kind of loud amplified music does travel far or just my hearing is very good or a combination of both. So that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Director Dropkin, I saw your light come on earlier. Did you have any thoughts?
Oh, thank you, Chair. The Caitlin actually got my question. So, or my answer, I should say.
Yeah.
I was going to mention there's a noise ordinance. She's definitely on top of things.
I, I know the feeling when your colleagues jump in. So, okay, great. Let's see here. Ms. Curly, if, if I remember correctly, in this application, there's no proposed use where the kitchen will be used to cook food. I recall reading that everything would be catered if catering services are required. Is that correct?
That's correct. There is a kitchen adjacent to Suite 250. That's the dining room. But it would be used only as a staging area. There would be no actual cooking or food preparation taking place anywhere on site.
Okay. And then if, if I recall, because I actually grew up not far from TBN, just on South Coast Drive in the Wimbledon. And I don't recall there being a crosswalk from Schiffer over to TBN or really anywhere within the vicinity until you get down to the light, which is pretty far away. On Poller, is Pollerino's the closest cross, crossing?
I believe so.
Okay. So I'm just trying to think through the, the mental aerial map. If, if there was any concern about parking at Schiffer, a person would have to walk pretty far away to just get to a crosswalk and then come back, come back up again to the, to the project site. I, I guess far is relative, but it's relatively far.
It would be a bit of a walk.
Okay. Yeah. So it'd be, I don't know, it'd be like playing Frogger trying to go across Bear Street. I know that's an old reference, but. Yeah, I just want to make that known. I don't think that parking is, at Schiffer is necessarily worrisome. All right. Any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing. And if we need to take a, a second to talk amongst ourselves about anything, happy to do that. If anyone has any thoughts they'd like to share before we move on to a motion. Vice Chair.
The hearing's closed, right?
Yes.
Well, I'll just say I'm in favor of approving the project, but I'll let somebody else make the motion because I feel like there might be one or two conditions that one of the commissioners might want to throw in.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair.
But I'd be happy to second.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Andrade.
Yeah, again, I'll, I'll emphasize the consideration, this is such a beautiful location that's been in the community for a very long time. We have a very active Costa Mesa Historic Society. Maybe an opportunity to do some sort of community tours, especially now hearing, there's a Sistine Chapel type of painting. Like I can see absolutely an opportunity for cultural immersion, just learning more about the architecture around the building and the grounds. So I would highly encourage the applicant to maybe consider an opportunity to engage with the city, Costa Mesa Historic Society and, and again, many community-based organizations that are looking for, you know, exploration into various types of careers for our youth would be amazing.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Anyone else? All right. Commissioner Zick.
Well, since you're encouraging a discussion prior to motion, I guess I'll give my thoughts at this point. I'm not sure yet whether I would support this or not support this. I still have some questions in my, my head. For Mr. Marshall's benefit, one of the conditions of approval indicates that valet parking must be free. So from your standpoint or the concern you expressed, people would not opt to park at Schiffer Park to avoid paying for valet parking. That wouldn't be a reason for that. And regarding the crosswalk, when education first was seriously planning their development at this site, a crosswalk was planned to be installed and was very much supported by the city. So it may be advantageous now to not have a crosswalk there, but that wasn't the case with the earlier development. We don't have a lot of residents here and I listen for resident feedback, not so much to define what compatibility is, but to give me an indication as to their assessment of compatibility. Lack of residents being here tells me that there is not a lot of resident concern for what is being contemplated at this location. But that said, I'm not entirely sure or comfortable with what I'm being asked to approve. It feels to me a little bit like I'm being asked to approve a camel's nose under the tent. You're not going to do anything with the third floor, but you might and it won't come back to us for approval unless we add it as a condition. There's adequate parking with a maximum of 225 people. But yet, you're going to have valet for over 400. Why, why would we, why would we contemplate that? Because somewhere down the road, it's likely to be that. And at that point, it's a different project than what's in front of us today. And it's a different project than what the residents have had the opportunity to consider. And that's where I'm a little bit torn on this. There's a project in front of us and then there's a project that represents the entirety of the camel that isn't in front of us and I'm concerned about that. Special event permits. This is something that the city has the latitude of granting. They don't come before us. They're granted at a ministerial level. I imagine if you had an event there, special event, got a permit and the residents raised a bunch of uproar because they didn't like the nature of that event, maybe that would be the only time you'd ever get one of those. But special events isn't something that's part of our conditions here. I think it's exciting what you're trying to do and I almost feel like it's more conceptual at this point. You just want a lot of flexibility to do a lot of different things. I frankly don't care if you had three events going on simultaneously. I frankly don't care. If it's within two-hundred-and-twenty-five people, whether it's one event or three events, I'm not sure I care, I the city. I'm not sure you even know today if there would ever be a situation where you would want to have three events. Because maybe somebody wants an event there, you look at your calendar, we've got nothing booked, what do you need? Well, I got twenty people, okay, we'll put you in the auditorium. Somebody else calls, they got something else, they only got thirty people. Okay, we'll put you over here. And then somebody else calls and says they got a hundred people, I'd like your banquet space. But right now, we say, no, can't do that. What do we care? It's less than two-hundred-and-twenty-five people, what do we care? So I'm torn between what's the project in front of us that's being asked to be approved and the project that is not in front of us, that is highly likely to occur. That's where I'm torn. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and make the motion, if I may. I'll find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SECP, Per SeCP Guidelines, Guidelines, Section fifteen-three-oh-one, Class One, Existing Facilities, and Improved Planning Application twenty-two-dash-thirty-seven, based on the findings of fact and subject to conditions of approval. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chair Toller. I'll be brief. I think that this is a very exciting project. I think it shows real courage to think outside the box, to reimagine space in this community and what it could be used for. We know what it was used for for a number of years, and then you came in, Mr. Koschman, and started reimagining that space altogether. I don't have that much of a concern with what might be implied for the uses that we're not seeing, because I think that there is enough of a backstop here in the conditions of approval and within the infrastructure in the city to guarantee that it doesn't become runaway, in a sense. We already know that there are certain triggers to where certain aspects of adding to the project in any way, if you will, will be coming back to Planning Commission, or it's likely to come back to Planning Commission. And when it's not, it's likely at the zoning administrator level, if there's any bigger concepts to kind of flesh out. I'm not worried about the potential for a car show, because that doesn't fall in the purview of this permit. That's something that would have to be applied for separately, up to four times a year. And I know it's tempting to say, well, tell me all your plans for what you may do, but then when you haven't really even thought about it, it's kind of hard to answer that question. So that might be an idea that is forthcoming, but we'll just have to see if or when it ever gets there. And, yeah, I think it's a good project, Mr. Koschman, so thank you for putting this forward. Vice Chair.
I also think it's a good project. I appreciate all the details that staff goes through and making sure this is not gonna be a nuisance in all those very detailed ways, but from my perspective, I step back and think, what's actually being asked? It's, this building's already built, it's been there for decades. The conditions around it have been as they are for decades, and the person that owns the property is saying, can I use it again at the end of the day? And we get a lot of projects like that, can I use this building that's all that already exists? I think the default answer is, of course, you could use the building that exists. But to the extent that there's valid complaint, you know, valid concerns over things like noise and traffic, I think we've done a good job of conditioning those things. We have a noise ordinance, we know from recent experience that we have a very proactive code enforcement that will deal with that. We have our conditions that deal with noises and times. The back door, I was a little concerned about that, but I don't think that's a big deal. I don't think it's going to happen, I don't think people are gonna use that. And then traffic on Bear, I think we've done as good a job as we can to limit bottlenecks at certain times a day, but but that's just an unsustainable way to plan, to be always prioritizing driving convenience and limiting the uses of our urban land based on that. So I think, yes, we should allow the property owner to use the building that's been there. And I think if you asked, the majority of Costa Masons would say, yeah, venues make perfect sense for that site, as long as it's properly conditioned, and I think staff's done a good job. That's it.
All right, thank you Vice Chair. Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, I have weighed every possible aspect of this project, the pros and the cons. And I, like Commissioner Zick, don't feel entirely comfortable with the project. As I, in my site visit today, it just, it feels a bit unfinished in terms of what the project will look like. And I understand that that's probably because they need a CUP in order to proceed with a building. It does really strike me as very odd that somebody would pay twenty-two million dollars and not use a third floor of their site, but I guess, you know, who am I to say? Property owners can do whatever they like with their properties, but I would feel more comfortable if I knew what was going on up there at some point. As for the car shows and whatnot, like the chair said, they're not in our purview, but I would hope that Mr. Koschman would go through the required permitting process to be able to do something like that. And I generally don't believe that this should be too heavy of impact on the neighbors, but I know that there are some neighbors here who don't feel enthused about the project. So I would like to remind you that you are our eyes and ears in the community about any property, whether this or anything else that is not following code. You are able to follow, to call our code enforcement, and they will send an officer to investigate and see whether or not a particular code is being followed or not. What I do worry about myself is the potential noise. The traffic isn't so much a concern, but the noise coming from Event Space Three does make me have a bit of pause, but again, if anything does happen, I encourage you to reach out to the city, and I'm sure that our city staff will follow up on that. And if there is a matter that needs remediation or mitigation, I am sure that we will address that in due time, so I will be supporting the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar, anyone else? All right, seeing none, Anna, if we can call the question.
That motion carries five-one, with Commissioner Zick voting no and Commissioner Klepak absent.
All right, thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck, Mr. Koschman. Thank you. Thank you. Brings us to old business, new business, I see neither, and we'll move into, we'll move on to departmental reports, starting with Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no reports from Public Works.
Okay.
Back to the Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. Development Services, Director Dropkin.
Thank you, Chair, I've got a couple small things I just wanted to mention. We are targeting on March eleventh the review of the pedestrian master plan. So I know Commissioner Vivar is very interested in that, so we're gonna get that up for him. Public Works is working diligently on the staff report, and that's when we're targeting for that date. We're also targeting, as you mentioned, Commissioner Chair about the FTC in the open house, we're also targeting a meeting in the next couple of meetings for the Planning Commission, a status report of where the Fairview Development Center project is, and give the Planning Commission a team presentation of the project.
All right, thank you, sir. And moving on to our city attorney, Mr. Preziosi.
Thank you, Chair Erath, no report this evening.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll now adjourn the meeting, thank you for joining us.